I will now call the June 17, 2018, Blue Springs City Council meeting in order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment recite ups and I will leave you in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance as well as those that might watch YouTube later on for tonight's city council meeting. That's where the consent agenda unless their items need to be pulled except for motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levinson?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Erickson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay. We just passed on item F and we have a couple of supporters out there in the audience from HRC and our community on the Life Skill Center. And this is something we've been discussing for a while and we are, we just passed a resolution that you'd ask us to pass showing the city's support for that. So, thank you for being here and we look forward to continuing to have dialogue with the community and certainly being led by our community leaders. So, again, thank you for coming. Next, we have a public hearing on the Amendment to the Unified Development Code.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated June 11, 2019 with attachments of staff report, affidavit of publication and the examiner on May 25, 2019, UDC text amendment application and bill amending the Unified Development Code. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Just trying to bring up the agenda here real quick. This is a Unified Development Code text amendment related to solar energy systems in the city. Currently, the city code does not address solar energy systems, solar panels, solar collectors and the like anywhere in the Unified Development Code. In the past, staff has treated these as rooftop mechanical equipment or other ground-mounted mechanical equipment and made interpretations to the code to allow for the installation of these. The purpose of these amendments is to provide more clarity for homeowners and businesses as well as solar installation companies to know what the rules are, provide regulations for the installation of solar and ultimately to promote renewable energy sources by allowing solar to be more accessible and financially feasible for residents and business in the city while providing the appropriate regulations for doing so. The proposed language I'll go through here very briefly would make solar energy systems and if we have a definition for those. Provide definitions for those to allow solar energy systems as residential and non-residential accessory uses in the code. That would involve an amendment to section 405,060A to list those as accessory uses. As such, those residential solar energy systems would need to comply with the applicable accessory use development standards in terms of height, setback and lot coverage. The height for a detached accessory structure is 16 feet or the height of the principal structure, whichever is less. The setbacks for accessory structures that are detached from the house, which is what ground-mounted solar panels would include, are two and a half feet from the rear and side property lines. However, they cannot be located within any easements, which are typically running along the side and rear property lines. Also, in the side and the rear, on a street-facing facade of the, or streets-facing side of the lot, they would be eight feet on the side and the rear. They would not be allowed to be within the required front yard on any property. And they would be limited to 10% coverage of the total lot area for a single solar installation or a single accessory structure is limited to 10% of the total lot area. And then, they would be part of the applicable combined lot coverage for all accessory structures and principal structures on the lot. So, for example, in the SF-7 zoning district, I believe, the total lot coverage for all structures on a lot is either 60 or 70%. And so, detached solar installation or detached shed, those get added up and included into that 70%. Like I said, solar collectors, either ground-mounted or freestanding, which there's two different types mainly, those are attached in the ground and those that are put up on roofs. Ground-mounted solar equipment would not be located in the front yard. The area restrictions, which I just mentioned in terms of lot coverage, would not be applicable to any solar collectors mounted on the roof. The thought there being that that ground cover is already being taken up by the building on which they're going to be, the solar panels are going to be attached and therefore wouldn't count towards any additional lot coverage because it's already being taken up. The third provision is that no accessory solar energy systems shall be used as a commercial enterprise. These installations are intended to be purely accessory to the principal use and not to be a commercial solar enterprise as proposed under the accessory use section. There is a separate section, which I'll address here in a minute, about commercial solar. The fourth provision is that before any building permit may be issued for a solar collector, evidence of approval from the local utility company shall be submitted to ensure that the local utility company is aware of it and that the excess power generated from a solar system is able to be transferred back into the energy grid through that provider. The fifth provision is that solar energy systems are exempt from all screening standards under 407,090H. This is the section in the code which requires all rooftop mechanical equipment such as HVAC units and things of that nature to be screened from view or located in a portion of the roof so that they can't be visible from the street or from a neighboring residential property. So, they either have to be screened with a screen fence or a parapet wall or located more towards the center of the building so that if you're looking at it from the street, your line of sight doesn't see that mechanical equipment. So, we proposed that the solar collector, solar energy systems be exempt from those standards to help make them more accessible and easier to install and not interfere with any of the sunlight reaching the solar panels. We also, as a condition of approval or as a condition of recommendation through the planning commission and through the development advisory commission, included other components to that section that said that roof-mounted solar panels should have all wiring and other similar components servicing the panels concealed to the extent possible and all exposed metal and support framing, not including the photovoltaic panel area, the glass area that actually captures the sunlight, but you know, the frame surrounding the glass picture, if you will, and all the metal holding up the solar panels should be finished in a color similar to the roof of the structure to which they are attached. For a roof-mounted solar system installed on a sloped roof, the highest point of the solar energy system shall not exceed the highest point of the roof to which is allowed. So, if the height of the house meets height requirements, then the solar panel at the angle can't exceed the pitch or the maximum peak of that roof. And that would be for a sloped roof. For a flat roof, the highest point of the system shall be permitted to exceed the district's, the underlying zoning district's height limit up to 10 feet above the rooftop. So, this would allow a solar panel installation to be 10 feet, a maximum of 10 feet above the flat roof and would allow it to encroach into the height limit of the zoning district. The second to last is that solar energy systems shall be mounted in a manner not to cause glare to surrounding properties. That was a request of the development advisory commission. And the final section is that the requirements of this section may be waived by the director, Director of Community Development. If it can be satisfactorily demonstrated that compliance with these regulations is impractical due to such issues as shading, building orientation, construction constraints or configuration of the parcel. We included this in there to allow the director to have some or provide some administrative relief for the installation of solar panels. The way the code reads is that rather than requiring a variance, which has to go directly to the Board of Adjustment, we're allowing staff to make a little bit of an administrative relief decision in that. The decision of the director is always appealable to the Board of Adjustment. This just hopefully allows for a little bit of minor modification at the staff level before having to go to the Board of Adjustment. As I mentioned earlier, for commercial solar enterprises, there are solar farms throughout the country in a lot of areas and currently we do not include those as a land use in the city. We've proposed to simply add the term solar farm under the definition of the utility major land use group. The utility major land use group includes things such as generating plants, electrical switching facilities, water, wastewater treatment plants, similar facilities, large-scale energy-producing or infrastructure-related utility generators. And so, by doing that, we believe a solar farm is a significant enough land use, which is, you know, a parcel taken up almost entirely of solar panels, to lump that in with that use group. That use group is allowed in most zoning districts with approval of a conditional use permit. So, if somebody wanted to come into the city and do a commercial solar farm, they would have to go through the conditional use permit process and get approval through the planning commission. Finally, we provided a definition for solar energy system, excuse me, which is any device used to collect solar energy and convert it to any other form of energy, including without limitation, photovoltaics, flat plate concentrating devices, greenhouses. A solar collector does not include standard skylights or windows. The development advisory commission reviewed these proposed changes on May 29 of this year and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the UDC changes as written with a few suggestions that we look into some other cities to see how they handle things such as the solar panels creating glare off-site and also the coloring of the solar panels. So, that's what we did. The planning commission reviewed the proposed language on June 10 of this year, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the UDC text amendments with two changes. First, to clarify that excess solar energy may be sold back to the local utility company as applicable. And two, to require the components that service solar panels, including support posts, framing and wiring to be concealed and colored to match the roof of the structure to which it's attached, not including the photovoltaic solar panels themselves. They wanted to make that clear in their recommendation. So, both the DAC and the planning commission recommended approval. Staff reviewed the UDC text amendments against the code criteria for text amendments and finds that the proposed amendments do meet that criteria and therefore does recommend approval of these text amendments to you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question to Mike. Seeing none. Thank you. We'll go to the public. Any one in order, I can speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? We'll close the public hearing. Next, we'll have the introduction and reading of Bill 4673 with the second reading coming at the next council meeting, which will be July 1st, to allow for any retooling that might take place. Okay, city administrator.
Mike, I've got a question for you. I just want to make certain I understand the issue with the hardware of the solar unit once it's on the roof to, not the panel, the panel is untouched, but the hardware itself is required to match the color of the structure?
Color of the roof of the structure to help it blend in.
Okay, color of the roof.
Yes.
Okay. I was afraid we were going to have a yellow house and we were going to have yellow structure around the, okay. You've answered my question.
Yes, I had the same concern. I wanted to make sure that that matched the shingles.
The structure of the shingles.
Yeah, the color of the roof itself.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, in most subdivisions, they require weathered gray. I know in my subdivision is the color of the roof that they require.
Your honor?
Yes.
If I may, when we look at this further, one of the things I would like to see are some sketches that will help me to actually visualize how tall these would be in, on any given building for any given roof type, kind of like we do when we look at the line of sight for corners.
Okay.
I would like to see that so that, I mean, the numbers on the page are one thing, but actually seeing that visual, I need the visual.
Okay.
I'm a visual kind of person, so I would appreciate that.
Okay.
There any other instructions that we need to?
I'll introduce you, your honor.
Okay, we got an introduction because we started discussing it before we introduced it. All right, we have an introduction.
Second.
You don't have the second introduction.
Ah, no, then move.
First reading.
Without.
First reading of Bill number 4673 and ordinance amending various sections and subsections of Title IV, chapters 401 through 411 Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri to adopt regulations for solar energy systems.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and in preparation for retooling and rerating on July 1st at our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full, same sign? Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item. Introduction and reading of Bill 4674.
I'll introduce, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number 4674, ordinance approving the conveyance of a permanent drainage and detention easement from Blue Springs Self-Storage LLC for minor lot line adjustment, West Gateway Office Park, Second Plat, lots 3 through 7 inclusive, lot 4, I'm sorry, lot 6A, parcel 2.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full, same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4674, ordinance approving the conveyance of a permanent drainage and detention easement from Blue Springs Self-Storage LLC for minor lot line adjustment, West Gateway Office Park, Second Plat, lots 3 through 7 inclusive, lot 6A, parcel 2.
Move the bill be approved on a second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Erickson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levinson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4830.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4675.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of Bill number 4675, an ordinance amending section 380.140A of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri to increase the financial responsibility required for drivers for injury to or destruction of property of others in any one accident.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second? Second. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full, same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4675, an ordinance amending section 380.140A of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri to increase the financial responsibility required for drivers for injury to or destruction of property of others in any one accident.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Aye.
Councilman Levinson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levinson?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4831.
Next is introduction and reading of Bill 4676.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of Bill number 4676, an ordinance approving a modified funding agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, MODOT, for sidewalks along State Route 7, Highway 7 Highway from I-70 to Northwest Pink Hill Road. It's the CIP project number ST43, STP 1200408.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? I mean, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full, same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4676, an ordinance approving a modified funding agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission, MODOT, for sidewalks along State Route 7 Highway from I-70 to Northwest Pink Hill Road. It's project CIP, ST43, STP 1200408.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
For a second?
Second.
Under discussion, this is something we've been working on for a long time. You know, we talk about it a lot. It's when we see motorized wheelchairs and baby strollers going up and down 7 Highway, I kind of cringe because I think it's an accident just waiting to happen and so to be able to start getting it.
You've been talking about this for nine years, I believe.
Yes, a long time.
Since you first got elected, that this is one of your projects that you wanted to get done and at least we're getting some of it done.
Right, getting some and we get this done, we're working hard to get to southern part, huh?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levinson?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4832.
Next, we have introduction of Bill 4677.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of Bill number 4677, an ordinance approving an agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for MODOT to utilize city streets at intersections with State Route 7 between Southwest Victor Drive and Southwest Wyatt Road to perform pavement restoration in the area. This is J4S3210.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full, same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4677, an ordinance approving an agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for MODOT to utilize city streets at intersections with State Route 7 between Southwest Victor Drive and Southwest Wyatt Road to perform pavement restoration in the area. This is J4S3210.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levinson?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Levinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4833.
Next, introduction and reading of Bill 4672.
I'll introduce, your honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill number 4672, an ordinance amending chapter 505 Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri for the purpose of updating the city's requirements for use of the public right-of-way and permitting of small wireless facilities generally.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second?
Second.
Would you like to make comments?
Yes, your honor, I just wanted to make a statement about this bill. It was on the agenda two weeks ago before the council and there have been a few changes made to the wording of the ordinance that is before you tonight. And Patrick Corcoran, the attorney who drafted the languages here tonight, if there's any questions.
Okay, any question from council?
This is you, your honor. I was just going to say this is some great new technology coming our way. Great to see that we'll be able to get incorporated into our city promptly.
Yeah, and it's kind of mandated that we get this done too, so. You know, and I think the biggest concern from cities is not just having these big old gaudy things all over the place. This doesn't fit into the culture of our city and it's kind of a fine line between allowing them what they need to have the technology and also keeping our city beautiful as well. So, all right, so there's been a, any more discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full, same sign? Motion carries.
The second reading of Bill number 4672, an ordinance amending chapter 505 Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri for the purpose of updating the city's requirements for use of the public right-of-way and permitting of small wireless facilities generally.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Levinson?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Levinson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4834.
Next, introduction and reading of Bill 4678. Anyone like to introduce?
I'll introduce, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number 4678, an ordinance amending chapter 115 Officers and Employees, Article 1, in general of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, adding section 115.055 mandatory retirement.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Yes, your honor.
Councilman Kayler?
I just want to make note, I will vote for this with no problem because of this contractual agreement, but I would really wish there was a way to be able to have the L6 that would really help benefit all issues of all parties involved. And I know there's a lot that involves that, but you know, it would certainly be beneficiary to all parties involved to take care of that. I just note that, but I will vote yes on this.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Culpepper?
Yes, I also will vote yes for this, but I am not happy about mandatory retirement and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, and what else? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full, same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4678, an ordinance amending chapter 115 Officers and Employees, Article 1, in general of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, adding section 115.055 mandatory retirement.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Levinson?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Levinson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4835.
Next, we have the moment we've all been waiting for, the public officials liability training by our city attorney. We can hardly wait every year and a half.
Exciting times.
Did we get popcorn tonight? Oh.
This is live training. Your honor, I read ahead and got read on slide. Prepare.
Okay. I guess Councilman Fowler will excuse, he's already.
He just looked at the pictures, your honor.
It's all yours, city attorney.
All right, here we are again. This presentation is required by our interns carrier, MPR. Most of you have seen most of it before and the mayor has asked me to move along, so.
Yes.
Do that. Okay, first topic is open meetings required by the Missouri Sunshine Law. And anytime there's a quorum of this council and the quorum is going to discuss public business, the city of Blue Springs, we have to have a meeting that is open and published and that the public is invited to. It doesn't matter whether the meeting is in person or through any other means of communication such as conference call, video conference, internet chat, internet message board, does anybody do that anymore, or social media. Like I said, notice has to be given at least 24 hours in advance. There has to be a tentative agenda posted and online. The place of the meeting must be accessible and reasonably accommodate the public. A journal and record of the votes must be kept and certain rules of order should be Emails between members of the council and staff or other members of the council, if Emails between members of the council and staff or other members of the council, if they relate to public business, we need to make sure that we have a copy of it, keep a copy of it. If quorum is included in the email, that's a meeting, so please avoid that. But if at all possible, send a copy of the emails or copy the city clerk's address, which is in the body of this presentation and you should all have it. The sunshine law refers to a quorum as two or more members and in our case, the mayor is a member of the council, such that when counting the sender, a majority of the body's members are copied, so that would be you plus three other members. Again, this is a public record, subject to certain exceptions in the sunshine law. Violations of sunshine law, I'm gonna talk about those more in a few minutes because there've been some recent lawsuits in the state of Missouri concerning violations. But if there is a violation, a lawsuit is filed, it goes to a judgment and the judgment is against the city or a member of the body and it is found to be a knowing violation, there's up to a one thousand dollar fine. They take into consideration the size of the jurisdiction, the seriousness of the offense, previous violations. And the violator may be ordered to pay costs and attorney's fees and that is where the big money is. If it's a purposeful violation, and these are talking about mens rea or intent of the person who commits the violation, the violator will be required to pay costs and attorney's fees. Can't read my writing here, it's under these words at the bottom. But purposely is a little more difficult to find and it has to be a conscious intent or plan to violate the sunshine law. So there've been some recent cases, one or two of them I think I've talked to you about last year, but I want to draw attention to these. Most of these involve executive or closed sessions. And the city of Sugar Creek, and I believe the city clerk was individually sued in her official capacity, was found to have violated the open meetings requirement of the sunshine law, closed meeting requirement of the sunshine law. No money was awarded in that case, it was found to be a violation, but no money was awarded. But please keep in mind that the plaintiff had asked for over a million dollars because the plaintiff was claiming that every meeting in the past ten years or so had been a separate violation. If that had been heard in another county, it could have been a completely different decision. The city of Raytown was recently ordered to pay, they were found in violation, this was also a closed meeting records case. They were ordered to pay thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in attorney's fees, one thousand one hundred forty-eight in expenses and the fine to the plaintiff was four thousand dollars, was four distinct violations. This has been appealed to the Court of Appeals and briefs are being filed right now on that, so I'll keep an eye on it. Okay, again, this is hard to read, let me turn to my page. But Clay County was recently sued and this has been in the newspaper, you probably have read about it. But Clay County, they're being audited by Missouri State Auditor right now, there's a lot going on with that. But they had hired a private law firm to handle all of their sunshine law records requests. And the private law firm was billing them at three hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour to find records, go through them, redact if necessary, and send them out. So the Kansas City Star finds out about this and they asked the county, they made a records request to see the attorney's bills to the county for providing the service. And the attorney, the law firm charged the Kansas City Star four thousand and two hundred dollars just to review their billing records to the county. So the Star recently filed a lawsuit, I don't think anything much has happened in that yet. Just keep in mind that you could be paying three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour for all your sunshine law requests like the county does, we get it much cheaper here for our own public records. There's another case in Cole County where the Cole County prosecutor was sued for violating the sunshine law. And this was because the prosecutor didn't provide records that the court determined were actually open records. Prosecutor refused to provide them. Prosecutor was assessed a twelve thousand dollar civil penalty, twenty-four thousand and seventy dollars in attorney's fees and I believe that there will probably be some additional legal fees added into that because it was appealed and the prosecutor lost the appeal. So that is still up in the air, what additional money Cole County is gonna have to pay. Then there've been a couple of recent cases and the one I found was Wood Heights, but I understand there's been one that's maybe filed today by the Missouri Attorney General. And what these cities have done is they, in closed session without notice, disbanded their police departments. And they disbanded them because of the cost of complying with the new Supreme Court rules. Any questions about those cases? Conflicts of interest, our charter requires that any member of a board or commission or council who has a substantial interest, and substantial is defined here and it's defined in the charter, and that interest, that entity, that member is involved in a contract, sale, or purchase with the city, must make that interest known in writing and must refrain from voting or participating in that contract, sale, or purchase. Of course, it is illegal to accept bribes. A bribe is a payment, promise, gift, campaign contribution, et cetera, as a condition of performance of an official act. It is also illegal to use or disclose confidential information with intent to receive financial gain for yourself or a member of your family. Illegal to favorably act, to provide special monetary benefit for yourself, your spouse, or your children, or to offer, promote, or advocate for a political appointment in exchange for anything of value. Anyone who's found guilty of violating these, the first offense is a class B misdemeanor and the sentence could be up to six months in jail or a fine of up to a thousand dollars. Second and subsequent offenses are class E felonies. The sentence for a class E felony is not to exceed four years in prison or one year in jail and a fine up to ten thousand dollars or twice the amount of the financial gain. And then I want to discuss the difference between a ministerial action and a legislative action. Ministerial actions are, there's very little discretion in a ministerial action that you perform and they are like plating or other actions that courts have determined are ministerial. There's very little discretion to deny those, they should be improved as long as they comply with the UDC. Legislative actions are different. Here you have discretionary action and that is so long as it is fairly debatable that there is a reasonable public interest being protected. There is a presumption of validity and these would include zoning or rezoning actions. Votes in a public meeting, the decisions regarding public business must be made in accordance with the Missouri Open Meetings Law, the sunshine law, and poll, votes by phone, or other electronic means in Missouri are illegal. Make sure that you get good advice when you're voting and if you ever have any questions, you certainly can contact city staff, your city attorney. And again, I ask that if you do that, you do it before the meeting, so we have time to get answers to you and aren't put on the spot or can't find the answer during the meeting. We need to make sure we close our meetings properly and close by a roll call vote. And when we make the motion, which I usually read, I have to reference the state statute and the subsection authorizing the closure of the meeting. All votes in closed meetings are taken by a roll call vote. The case of the Kansas City Star versus Catherine Shields held that a committee, subcommittee of the council was also bound by the sunshine law and meetings had to be, all the notice requirements had been met. And there's an attorney general opinion that has held that a task force appointed by a school district was subject to sunshine law. And all the meetings, again, have to be open, open to the public and accessible. So, in summary, avoid conflicts of interest, avoid the appearance of impropriety. If you ever have any question about that, give me a call and we'll work something out, determine if you should announce or make it public that you may have a conflict of interest and we'll determine whether or not you can vote or participate in the council action on that. When you have a public hearing, it's very important that you don't express your opinion on how you're gonna vote before you hear that the evidence is presented at the hearing. It's like, I was talking to a council member today about that, it's like being a judge. You don't know what the evidence is gonna be until you hear it, so don't make your decision until you have heard everything. And familiarize yourself with the city's charter, the municipal code, and sunshine law. If you ever need copies of those, I'm sure you have them, or you can ask me and I will provide those to you, they're online. It's a good idea to always attend conferences, Missouri Municipal League puts on excellent conferences, National League of Cities. I also wanted to talk just briefly about texting, social media comments, like Facebook or Twitter or recently seen the Nextdoor app where members of boards and commissions, I don't know if the council has, but have made comments in those that concern city business. Those are public records and if you make, if you comment or anything involving city business, we need a copy of that. That's a public record. And I was discussing that with Cheryl Morgan today and we're looking into getting maybe an app or something to capture those, we don't have that yet, so the best thing to do now is take a screenshot and send it to the city clerk website, yeah.
Yeah, I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Good information, thanks for sharing, relative to Facebook. Let's say there's a ceremonial event that we go to, like the opening of Splash Pad. Somebody goes and they post that, hey, you know, great to see this Splash Pad open and another one of us comment on that. Is that what you're talking about here, that we need to send an electronic copy of that to the city clerk?
What kind of comment would you be making?
Well, just congratulations, it's open, great to see it open.
I think a congratulations.
Shortened by the rain.
Yeah. I don't know, Cheryl, I don't think a congratulations would evoke the requirement that it come to you, do you?
I think that those are considered transitory, just kind of, they're not discussing policy or anything. But if you have an issue with a citizen, with a road issue or something to that effect, then that might be what rises to that level.
And I know that you might be commenting as a citizen, but you're still a public official and that line is blurry. So I would either avoid doing that or make sure you screenshot it and send it in. And I know that that is difficult sometimes, especially when, you know, you want to answer, you know the answer to it and you see something that's wrong. Either don't respond or copy us on it if you do, because it is a public record.
Picky, 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 huh?
Yeah, and you know, using your phone, if you're texting each other or any member of the council or anybody really about city business, that's a public record. And you don't want, if a lawsuit is ever filed, you don't want to have to turn your phone over in discovery. I wouldn't. But it's possible that you would have to do that, so be very conservative in your text messages, instant messages.
Councilman Culpepper has a question.
Yeah, burning question here.
Yeah.
Say, if I'm texting or emailing back and forth with another member of council, but it's just the two of us, then I'm okay, right?
You're discussing policy?
So if we're talking about city business?
It's not a meeting, because there's just two of you.
Right.
But it's discussing city business and it's a public record.
But is it a violation? It's not, is it? If it's just the two of us, or the two of the other people, I mean?
It's not a meeting violation.
But it's discoverable.
But it's still, it still would be, it's still a public record. Yeah.
I have a comment and another question, if I may.
Go ahead, go ahead.
First, I really, she said that to me about the judge and it just kind of, wow, they did sunshine, so to speak. And then the next question, I did this this weekend, did I do incorrectly? I picked up something on Facebook that a constituent put on and I didn't want to respond, so I sent him. I actually called him and asked him if he would send an email to me of a copy of that so that it could go on the record, is that an okay thing to do?
I, I think that is, yeah. Cheryl, what do you have?
As opposed to commenting on it on Facebook.
Good, that you didn't do that, yeah.
Actually, I think that that's preferred, to have that conversation outside of the public realm and then you have that. It's now captured in your city email address as the record.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, suppose.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I know, that's three tonight, that's it. The, I lost my train of thought now, but. So in the city, and I don't have examples, but I think I might, and I know we have them, had them in the past. Can more than one family member serve on a non, on a board? In other words, can you have like the, I don't know, name two boards, can two different members of the family, if they're not four removed, I think that's the rule, four removed, can they do that, can we do that?
I have to look at that.
It happened with the HRC.
Right. I, we don't have anything that prohibits that. But, and that would be probably a decision that the mayor would make, because he makes all the appointments.
I think, I think what you're getting confused with, the issue is that you can't vote for a member of your family up to four out. There's no prohibition for even a member of your family serving on a board, you just can't vote for it. So there's no prohibition from two members serving on the same board even, of the same family, as long as the mayor wants to appoint them to that. The prohibition is from you voting for any member of your family up to four rows out.
Correct, correct.
And I think the mayor would, and I would also look at the level of the group. So if you've got.
Advisory or legislating.
Yeah, if they're making decisions that are coming to you for approval, that seems to me to be a conflict. But again, that would be.
You have another, is that it?
No, sure, that's it.
I do.
Councilman Culpepper?
Again, no secret texting apps, so don't do that, please. And that's about all I have tonight, does anyone have any more questions?
Yes, ma'am, I was in line.
Oh, I see, thank you.
I really am gonna have a hard time with this, just promoting something that's in the city and making an electronic copy and sending it in, if you're just, you're doing something like promoting the Splash Pad or Girls on Fire, for instance, or any of the city Facebook stuff that comes out, that's a violation if we don't do electronic?
No, promoting it, I don't, I wouldn't consider that.
You know, we make, we make several Deer Mustang appearances and we're always putting something on Facebook that the Deer Mustang appears here or there or I know like Cole Pepper or the mayor or myself even at deer graduations, you know, promoting that. I just.
Ceremonial events to me are not conducting business, we're not making a decision to change an ordinance. You know, we're just acknowledging that it's a ceremonial event.
Right, and again, it's not a policy.
Well, me telling Councilmember Erickson not to wear a pink tie, I don't know how that constitute.
That policy?
Well, I don't know.
Maybe it should be.
It should be.
Can we vote on that?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I was asking Cheryl about it because she just went to a nationwide, national city clerk seminar and apparently went to a class that had a very good presentation on it, on electronic communications and social media.
I will say, and I think City Administrator Johnson and I talked about it a couple of times, I went to a Missouri Municipal League and we talked a lot about, like, if there's three or four of us talking about something on Facebook, we just had a meeting on Facebook.
That's right.
You can get in trouble for that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, like, it's really hard not to address something that somebody has wrong when they're yelling about something that's happened and you know that's not right.
It is hard.
But we talked about too, there's ways to capture not only the image itself, but also the metadata that records who made the comment and all that too.
Yeah.
I think that's what you talked about working on.
Yeah, and then another thing that has come up recently is before meetings and maybe after meetings, before executive sessions and after executive sessions, just be real careful that there's not four of you standing around and, you know, social discussions, fine, but talking about city business, gotta be careful about that. fine, but talking about city business, got to be careful about that.
Well, you know, I get, people will message me, and if it's related to city business, I immediately send it back and say, email me, and here's my email address. I will not discuss this on Facebook.
I think that's a good policy.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else got any questions?
Mayor, I do like his pink tie, by the way.
You still got one more to catch up with your cohort in District One. You had three, and you've only had two.
I understand.
All right, Jackie, thank you again for the presentation, and I think we have to take to heart these things because it's getting more and more difficult deciding what we can do and what we can't do.
It is.
You know, so just heed the warning. Okay, that's going to bring us to Maryland announcements. We got one more meeting before the Fourth of July, so I'm just going to go straight into thoughts to ponder. Tonight is John Dewey. Education is not preparation for life. Education is life itself, end quote. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and...
Just real quick. Information went out to our residents last week, and I believe maybe some hard copies hit in the mail over the weekend about the July fourth extravaganza being canceled this year. We hope to resume that next year. This was a one-off as a result of the construction occurring at Blue Springs High School campus. We had numerous conversations with the school district and whether or not we could accommodate the event. We did not believe it would be safe for the district or for the people who visit. We also evaluated several different locations and tried to review the logistics of how we could move it to a certain location, and we just decided that we did not have a facility that would accommodate the large crowds that we see at PV Stadium. So we have received some feedback and some, been a few folks who were unaware that this was occurring, and we received some calls this morning at City Hall with some folks expressing some frustration about that. We apologize to the residents for this short-term inconvenience, and again, we hope we are able to resume it next year, but I just wanted to remind folks, it is canceled.
The root cause, again, was construction at this facility.
That is correct.
Okay.
And the fact they got construction going on in both half schools, and so...
Your Honor, I tell you what, though, talk about getting banged for your buck, I went by the Splash Pad in Burris Old Mill Park over the weekend, and my goodness, was there a lot of people out there already enjoying that, so it's great to see.
Once I get ninety degrees, I might run through there, too. Okay, anything else coming forward, council? If not, I accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? All in both same sign? We adjourn.